Good evening Wakefield, welcome to the Town Council meeting of Monday, June 26, 2023. Call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM and ask that we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, item number three, attendance. I'm joined here in studio by Councillor Butt, Vice Chair McLean, Councillor Smith Galvin, and Councillor Vincent. I see Councillor Dombrowski on Zoom. Hello Ed. And Sheri, do we have Councillor Danahy on Zoom as yet?
We do not, we do not yet, no.
Okay. Great. In just a moment, we are going to go into our annual public hearing for water and sewer rates. Just before we go into that, I want to make sure that the folks in studio and anyone on Zoom understands our agenda this evening. It's a little more complicated because of the hearing, as well as a joint meeting that we have with the Gas and Light Commission coming up at 8 o'clock. But in a moment, we will be going into the public hearing for the water and sewer rates. As part of that hearing, we will have a public participation period specific to the water and sewer rates. So anyone from the public who wants to add comment on the water and sewer rates, that would be your time to do that. Once we close out of the hearing, we will have another public comment period for every other item on our agenda following the closure of that committee. So anyone else who's interested in speaking on anything other than water and sewer rates, please hold your comments until then. So with that, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing for the water and sewer rates for fiscal 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? No, we'll take a roll call vote. Councillor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Councillor Vincent?
Yes.
Councillor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Chair McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So the hearing is hereby opened. Welcome Joe and Ann.
Thank you very much. For the record of Joe Conway, Director of Public Works, joining me is our fantastic business manager Anne Wait. And I think Sheri is joining us via Zoom will be Matt Abrahams of the Abrahams Group, who we're all familiar with. So what brings us here tonight? We're here to present the recommended water and sewer rates for fiscal year 24. These are the rates that fund our operating and capital budgets. Just a little context to what gets us up to this point, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So this process honestly really begins July 1st. As soon as we enter the new fiscal year, Anne and I are constantly, you know, watching expenditures, revenues, and keeping our eyes on the two enterprises as we move along through the year. Right around January 1st, we take a deeper dive into things. This is when, you know, we've had two billing periods come through. So we kind of have a temperature as to what the year may lay out in front of us. We also engage the Advisory Board and we end up working with Matt to do some audits of our enterprises and look at some of the finance numbers. We get our preliminary numbers for our assessments from the MWRA sometime around late February, early March, and at that point, we're out of the gate and we're going. I could say that the whole process is fluid. It changes every day as we're meeting with the Advisory Board and internally. There are a lot of things that change along the way as this is kind of a dynamic piece. Some of that I'll elaborate on a little bit. Ultimately, what this leads us to is the Advisory Board sees a bunch of different rate packages, asks us questions to provide them different information, and then they vote to make a recommendation to the council. What I can tell you is what you're going to hear from me largely tonight, Anne and Matt, is a lot of the same that we repeat year after year after year, with one exception. This year, we get our final assessment from the MWRA late. Tends to be the end of June. It's when their Board of Directors votes on what their budgets will be. Then they inform us how that impact to the different members' communities will change. One of the things that will be a little bit different tonight that we have not done in the past is on the sewer assessment this year, it's actually reduced $99,000 and change. So what we've done is Public Works has taken a little bit of jurisdictional governance here, and we're actually going to present a sewer rate recommended that was different from the initial package that the council saw. It's actually going to be a reduction. Some of the timing with public meetings and making sure the agendas work and fitting the Advisory Board in to vote before we get to the public meeting posting for this makes it a little bit tough, especially with the MWRA votes at the 11th hour to issue their final assessment impacts to us. I've spoken to the Chair of the Advisory Board and they are 100% behind us doing this and presenting that difference to you tonight. So without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Matt Abrahams. He's our consulting partner in this process. And I will turn it over to him and we'll walk you through some of the financials.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Abrahams, part of the Abrahams Group. Thanks for that introduction, Joe. I think you hit upon a lot of the important points. So as we've done in years past, because this is, we've been working with the town a few years now on water and sewer rates. We put together a financial analysis for the town for both water and sewer. It's in the form of a very detailed Excel workbook. And ultimately, towards the end of the process, as Joe mentioned, we put together rate plan options for initially for Joe and Anne's consideration, then that leads to the consideration of the Advisory Board of Public Works and ultimately the council's consideration. We have summarized for you this evening the highlights of the financial analysis in slides that are now on the screen in front of you. I plan to walk through those slides with the Chair's permission just to show you those highlights and also show you the Advisory Board of Public Works recommended water rate plan. And as Joe mentioned, the rate plan that is part of these slides for sewer was the option that was recommended by the Advisory Board of Public Works recently. But because of new information that just came in extremely recently, as Joe mentioned, we are going to be looking at a different sewer option this evening, once we get to that point. And before we dive a little deeper here, I just wanted to highlight one, what I consider to be a very important thing on the water side. Because of what we're calling a one-year blip, for lack of a better term, the water assessment from the MWRA is significantly up for the next fiscal year FY24 because of the treatment plant being offline for an extended period of time recently. And there is unfortunately a need to fund that as part of the water budget for the upcoming fiscal year, FY24. But now that the treatment plan is back online and functioning as expected, we anticipate that going forward, starting in FY25, the MWRA water assessment revert back to a lower point than where it is for FY24. So unfortunately, there's a need to fund a sort of an increased budget on the water side for that reason. We'll talk about that a little bit more as we go on. So I plan to just run through these slides. There's not that many, might be 10 to 15 of them. We have slides for water and then similar slides for sewer, and then we'll show you the options together. But also keep in mind that for sewer, the options are going to change. All right, so for water, this slide is a historical slide. We look backwards just to show you what has happened with rates over the last few fiscal years. In this case, it's a six-year look. You can see in FY20, after two years and probably more years going back further, there was no service charge of water. In FY20, there was one implemented of $18 per bill. FY21 was my first year of working with the town on this analysis. And that year, tiers were implemented as well as a service charge based on meter signs rather than just a flat charge per bill in FY21. And you can see the last two fiscal, the last two times we did this, the water rates increased by 3.5%. And there was no change in service charge those years, even though we did discuss it those years. And the reason why we did discuss it was because initially, when we implemented the service charge back in FY21, for FY21, that what we were planning on ramping it up, so to speak. It was designed to recover a certain amount of administrative costs that we calculated part of the water budget, but it wasn't the full 100%. It was somewhere in the 60% range. And we planned a multi-year ramping up of the service charge at the time, but that has not happened. The service charge remains as is since then, and you'll see as we move forward here that we are not proposing change in service charge. Simply keep in back of your mind because that was the original intent. So recent highlights, this is highlighting how well the fund has performed very recently and how retained earnings is now a very healthy balance. Those surplus, there has been a surplus in the water fund each of the last four completed fiscal years, and we are estimating a small surplus for FY23, which is the current fiscal year, which is almost completed. Retained earnings balance increased the last three years, and most recently, it was certified at $2 million for about 30% of fund expenditures. That is a nice healthy number. You may recall from work that we've done in the past that we were targeting a percentage down near 10%, actually a little bit less than 10%, 8.5%. So it's well above that, but that's, it is great news as well. So having retained earnings available allows the town to focus on capital expenses without incurring additional debt, which is something that Joe focuses on each fiscal year. Next slide. Thank you. All right, so looking forward, so that last slide was a historical slide. Now we're starting to look forward a little bit. And keep in mind, FY24 is the first year of this five-year look. That is the fiscal year for which you are presumably going to set rates. This is the water slide only. So the FY24 budget is up over $1 million compared to the prior year. 16.5% increase. Those numbers, just Sheri, do not include capital. That's just regular operating, 1 million. It does include the MWRA assessment that was already talked about. So the preliminary assessment in these slides are put together prior to the receipt of the final assessment. But from my understanding, the final assessment for water is very similar to the preliminary assessment. You use a small $1,000 difference and negligible for our discussion this evening. FY24's assessment up more than $700,000 or 27.5% over the prior year. That is obviously a huge jump, especially since the increase, don't have the number front of me, but it's not that high annually, not nearly that high annually. The increase is largely due to the shutting down of the treatment plant for seven months, making town more reliant on the MWRA's water than usual, and one-year blip, as already mentioned. And based on where we think the assessment will be, we have it going down, meaning decreasing for the following year. So that does again highlight that one-year blip that's already. Looking forward past FY24, FY25 to FY28, we have expenses including capital increasing by an average of 3.4% here. So that highlights the need to make sure that users are keeping up with that for future capital projects. Main Street Mainz project, we are assuming will be funded at $2.5 million for FY24, and that funding is made up of a $2 million borrowing assumption and $500,000 out of retained earnings. That borrowing assumption translates to projected additional debt of $730,000 over the next five years. And capital outlay, which we have as being funded via retained earnings, is part of what voted each and every year. Numbers, the current $67,000 for FY24, the upcoming fiscal year. And including $500,000 already mentioned about Main Street, 1.3 million the following fiscal year, FY25, $900,000 FY26, and an additional $100,000 per year after that. That would be 27.28. Now, those fiscal years obviously have not been voted or probably discussed at this point, but that is what we are carrying in our analysis. And when we put together the rate plan, we are looking at multiple years. The numbers that you see going forward here, keep in mind that all of these dollars I'm talking about right now are part of our financial level. Next slide, please. Thank you. Baseline water, do nothing. So what this represents is we've included all of our projected, all of the projected expenses, FY28 through 20, sorry, FY23 through FY28, but we are assuming no revenue changes. So the revenues stay flat. Now, this is not reality because any responsible group would not let this happen, but we do like to show it so you can see how things tail off with no activity. So we have retained earnings covering these projected deficits through FY25, barely, but not beyond that. And you can see that the blue line, which is the projected retained earnings line, the orange line is the targeted retained earnings line of 8.5%. The line goes below the orange pretty quick, and then ultimately goes below the 0% threshold as well, not far after that. Next slide. So here is the Advisory Board of Public Works recommended option for water. And we ultimately ended up focusing on a rate increase for FY24 that is the same as the prior two fiscal years, FY22 and FY23. You may recall that 3.5% for FY24. Again, mentioned no changes to service charge, and we are targeting retained earnings balance of 8.5%. So I'll quickly walk you through these tables so you can understand what's here. That top part of the table on the left says rate changes. Those are what we have projected as the rate plan over the next five fiscal years. Again, all of the expenses mentioned earlier are included when we're targeting these numbers. Small surplus in FY24, that's that surplus deficit line. You can see it as well as the projected retained earnings line just both. So even with this rate plan, we are anticipating deficits for some of the next few fiscal years, including FY24, meaning that retained earnings would, in theory, be able to balance that, balance the budget. There would be retained earnings needed because revenues are not keeping up. Now, keep in mind, we already talked about that there is that one-year blip for FY24, so that's not too surprising. FY25 is showing a large projected deficit as well. Main driver there is the additional, I believe it's the additional debt for the Main Street project plus the 1.3 million capital outlay that we're carrying that year, FY25. And then small projected deficits in 26 and 27, ultimately back to a surplus in 28 with this rate plan in place. So again, those numbers are with the rate plan in place. And then the bottom table shows, we like to focus on sample users. Average residential user is somewhere around 2,000 cubic feet per quarter. That's the second line down on the table. We like to include that, as well as a low-end user, which is half that amount. And we're calling a high, a very high user with different meter sizes. And most meter sizes do matter here because there is a different service charge for your size. So you can see the current bill, and then you can see projected new bills going up right based on the rate plan that's above. And also keep in mind, this is a per, these are per bill amount and bill quarterly. So quarterly, the average residential user based on a 3.5% would go up a little more than $5 per bill, which would be somewhere at $20, $20 something dollars per year. The top left, the top right table shows the new rates based on this rate plan. It's your tier structure, tiers 1 through 4. And then you have the updated graph right shows that because of the need to use retained earnings to cover the revenue deficit in some of those years, the reliance falling down. But with the rate plan, it ends up right around the targeted FY26 through FY28. So that's it for water. And Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to discuss water separately than sewer because we're about to move on to the sewer slide.
Yeah, let's continue with the sewer and then we can open it up to discussion and questions once we go through the whole thing. I think it's hard to, hard to comment on these in isolation.
Yeah, no problem. Happy, happy to do that. So we'll walk through the first few slides and then I'll look to Joe as to how we want to present the updated rate option. But let's start with these, these first few slides here. So this is the six-year review, looking back for sewer. Just like with water, there was no service charge in place for a period of time. FY21 was implemented $20 per bill, as well as a rate decrease that year. FY21, again, my first year working with the town on rates. The tier structure was put in place at that point, as well as an updated service charge. And like with water, there was a, the same rate increase was proved for FY22 and FY23, 2.15%. And no service charge change for the reasons mentioned earlier. Recent highlights. We saw a surplus in FY21 and 22 after large deficits of two years that preceded that. We are anticipating a large deficit of about $400,000 for FY23. Retained earnings balance increased for two straight years, but decreased slightly with the most recent certification, which was about $1.6 million or about 18% of fund expenditures. So again, that is a healthy number, even, even though it did decrease slightly recently, 18%, well above the 8.5% already mentioned. And like with water, having retained earnings available allows the town to focus on capital expenses without incurring additional debt. So the looking, the look forward slide, starting with FY24 the next fiscal year, all the way through FY28. Budget for FY24 is up about $200,000 or 2.1% compared to the prior year. Those numbers do not include capital, the operating base. Excuse me. The MWRA assessment, so this, this number is, has already changed. But the preliminary assessment was up 78,000, well, 1.1% compared to the prior year. As Joe mentioned, it was, it decreased by about $99,000 from the preliminary assessment. So that means net, it actually went down compared to the FY23 assessment, only slightly, but it went down about $20,000. The town has seen consistent, or did see consistent annual increases in the 3.5% to 5% range from FY17 to FY20. Recent average increases have been around 2%. So since then, since FY20, the increases have been around 2%. We were, in the analyses that we've done for the town in the recent past, we were carrying an annual increase for sewer, the MWRA sewer assessment of 4% year over year. But because of the recent results, now we have a year again where we went down, where the sewer assessment went down. We changed that to 3%. So that is a little bit of a change in our assumption from prior year. So every year, we had it going up 4% year over year, and now we have it going up 3%. So total expenses are a little bit lower for that year over year. We have the expenses FY25 through FY28 going up 4% on average. That includes capital. So just like with water, there is a need for revenues to keep up with that. Future capital projects, additional 100% loan MWRA financing for a little over $1.2 million in FY24. That's a very advantageous loan to the town because it's a 0% intake loan. And there's a projected, projected additional debt of $400,000 over the next five years related to that. That's all principal, no interest on any. Capital outlay and articles funded via retained earnings are improved $477,000 in FY24. And going past that, we're looking at $600,000 in FY25, plus an additional $100,000 per year after that. It's a year over year with 26, 7, 8 over the FY25 number. Again, those numbers have not been discussed, presumably have not been authorized, but that's what we're carrying in our enough. Next slide, please. Baseline sewer, same slide as water, do nothing. That means it includes all the projected expenses, FY23 to FY28, but no revenue changes. And just like with, with water, you can see that retained earnings are strong enough currently to cover any projected deficits throughout FY25 and not beyond that. And you can see that blue dips below the orange pretty quickly around FY24 and then over the zero path, FY25. So there's not as sharp of a decline as compared to the water slide, but there is a decline over the next few years for sewer as well. Next slide, please. So here is the, here is the option that was recommended from the Advisory Board of Public Works. And you can see for FY24 that that number is 3.25%. But as Joe already mentioned, we are planning on showing a different option this evening. So I'll just ask Joe real quickly if he doesn't mind. Joe, how would you like to present that?
I'll take that, Matt. That's fine.
Okay.
Do you have it in the deck?
It's not in the deck, but I can put it up on the screen with my, with Excel, if that helps.
Do you mind just showing this, this option of this? Apologize. This is literally the 11th hour. Can you show this, this, this shot right here, but of the new recommended increase, please?
Yeah, it's not going to be, I don't have a slide with all the tables put together, but I have most of the stuff on the Excel here that we can show them.
Okay, yeah, we could, we could work through that. So essentially, like I had mentioned earlier, given the favorable result that we got in the final assessment from the MWRA related to sewer, we readjusted the tables that calculate everything and credited the $99,039 to the projections that we were making, and then altered what the percentages looked like based on that. And that's how we landed at not actually recommending tonight 3.25%. We're actually recommending that the sewer rate increase only 2.5%. What that'll do, you know, when you get to the end of this presentation here, we'll see. Initially, we were showing bill impacts. So what did that mean for the 1,000 cubic foot user? What did it mean for the average user at 2,000 and so on and so forth? All those bills in aggregate averaged somewhere between 3.1 and I think 3.6%. By making the change that we made, we were able to drop all of those below 3%. I believe they go between 2.1 and 2.6 at the top. So we really cut about a half a percent out of all the bills and put that savings back to the rate pair.
So I'm not able to share my screen. Oh, here we go. Apologize for the background noise. Okay, so here's the Excel.
Hang on just a second, Matt. I think there's a delay on our end to seeing your screen.
Someone you can see.
All right, we've got it. Though for those of us with shoddy eyes, if you could make it slightly bigger.
Okay.
That would be wonderful.
I'll make it, I'll make it even bigger. How many want to stop?
Keep going. All right, does that work for everyone in the room?
It's not coming up there, right?
No, sorry. For those of us in the room, it's on the, the screen facing the council, not behind Joe and Ann. All right, go ahead, Matt.
Okay, so you should be able to see Excel on the screen. There's the rate table at the top, followed by a table with dollars in it, followed by a graph. You can see that?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the Excel, and we translate this into the slide that you were looking at a moment ago. And all the same information is here. It's presented slightly. So the top table, you can see this new updated rate plan based on the information that is now available to us. So the rate plan includes 2.5% for FY24, and we believe that rates subsequent to that should probably be in the 4.5% range based on all the projections that we have in. The next table down, you can see for FY23, there's the sizable deficit that we're projecting. But for 24, we think there's going to be a small surplus. Well, with this rate plan, small deficits FY25 through FY27. So there's not a lot of movement here, a ramp of up and down, pretty, pretty stable with the decrease, with the deficits and the surpluses, once we get past FY23, as long as this rate plan works. So you can see the updated graph there. The blue actually stays above the orange. It gets close to it, but it stays above it. And then as we go down here, the next table is the, you see the current rates for sewer, as well as your tier structure, plus the, the projected new rates based on the rate plan that was up above. And then the table, the table below that has the projected new bills, as well as the current bills in the same format. I'm sorry, on the other slide. So this analysis has been updated to include the, the new or the final sewer MWRA assessment. And these numbers will reflect that. And these numbers hover like that. So those were, that's all the information I was planning on discussing, at least preliminary, preliminarily. So Mr. Tama, happy to take any questions or comments at this time.
Mr. Conway, do you or Ms. Wade have any comments before we open it up for questions?
No, just an apology upfront for the last minute, but I felt like, you know, as we talked about it, as soon as we got that information, it was, you know, too good not to try to pass on. I think we'd like to be a little bit more prepared before we come into this, but, you know, for the, the impact that I think that making that last minute change had, it was absolutely the right decision and worth doing, although presents probably a little bit more disorganized than we would like it to, but.
Well, we, we know you're working under the constraints of the MWR schedule as well, so we appreciate that. And it's always nice to be surprised with a lower recommendation than a higher recommendation. So grateful for that as well. All right, I'm going to open it up for questions from the council, after which we will open it up for public comment. I would just ask my colleagues if we could hold off on any motions. We'll take all of those at the end, once we've, we've heard from the public and make sure that everyone's clear on, on what we're seeing today. So any comments or questions from the council? Counselor Smith Galvin.
Thank you. This is always an impressive presentation. I just have a clarification question, and I may have missed this. Why was the treatment plant down for seven months?
So as part of our regulatory testing, PFAS, I'm not even going to attempt to tell you how to pronounce that, but.
Forever chemicals.
Yes. At no point in time were we ever in any violation at all. There was no public health risk, there was no notification that we needed to make anything like that. But as part of our, you know, due diligence in our testing, we received an elevated result that was unfavorable. We'd never seen that before. Massachusetts has the strictest threshold for compliance with that in the country, and we've been always hovering around about 50 percent of what they say is acceptable, which is fantastic. That test result came in elevated for us, and we'd never seen it, so we immediately contacted DEP and MWR and started working through why this phenomenon happened. Our finished water that comes out of the plant passed. Our raw water in Crystal Lake passed. Somewhere in the chain, in the middle, we received an unfavorable result. We went through all the DEP guidance, literally held their hand through every step of the way to try to figure out what it is because we want to fix it. Unfortunately, I don't know how many communities like us have been, you know, at that threshold with them, so it took a little while to get through that. Ultimately, it took seven months. Just after the new year, we went through another round of subsequent testing after making some suggested changes, and all was good. The terrible thing in all of it is I don't have anything concretely to pinpoint to to say this is exactly what it was. Intuition, you know, maybe a little bit of a hunch, it almost makes me personally think, you know, maybe the, the result was contaminated somewhere and it was an abnormal, abnormality. Can't prove it, don't know. But, you know, that's something that, there is no good enough in that it's either we're in compliance or we're not. And unfortunately, you know, we had to rely on MWR the whole way. We are fortunate that we could rely on them.
That's what I was just going to say, it's good that we have a backup.
There are a lot of places that don't have that luxury or in a lot worse spots, so.
And so what, we must continue to just test on a regular basis?
All the time, yeah. We do test for, it's probably one of the most heavily regulated industries on the planet, and we're testing constantly for a whole bunch of different things.
Great, thank you very much. I just wanted to understand that better.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Dubrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the, the presentation here. A few things I wanted to just pass along to my colleagues on the council. As liaison to, to the DPW, I had occasion to engage with the Advisory Board of Public Works as they're going through this, and I do want to credit them for the amount of thought that they put into these scenarios. If you happen to get a chance to watch one of their meetings, they, they are very deliberate in their decision-making relative to this. I do think that we're as well positioned as we could be in light of the fact that MWR drives a lot of this decision-making, and we're really in some ways at their mercy, although we're, we're at, on the receiving end of a benefit now, we're still looking at it, obviously, at 2.5 percent increase, which is, which is concerning. But the bigger concern that I have is the assumptions going forward at water at 6 percent and sewer at 4.5 percent. You know, these numbers that Mr. Everett was able to present are all based on some pretty significant increases for fiscal year '25, '26, '27 going forward. So I think it's something we have to be very mindful of, especially since we have retained earnings in a good position. Does that mean that we perhaps have to revisit some projects and think about the timing of certain projects in order to perhaps, you know, spread them out a little bit more than at present, in order to keep those, those rate increases more manageable? I don't know, and I don't think it affects the vote for tonight, but I do think it's something that needs to be on all of our radars. And I know that DPW is looking at that as well, because, you know, those would be significant increases in, in future fiscal years. As far as the water treatment, I, I think one thing that's important to highlight too, Director Conway, is that once we came back online, we were a, a powerhouse at that treatment facility. So I wouldn't say we, we made up all of the lost gallons, but we certainly ended up in a better position, I think, because, because of your team. And so you, you can speak to that in, in better detail.
Yes, thank you. So as soon as we went back on, Stephen, our treatment plant operator, has been pumping that thing like crazy. So we fully expect this year, we will 10x withdrawal, I shouldn't say 10x, but we will significantly enhance what we've had. And I would anticipate, the optimist in me tells me that the next time we receive the preliminary assessment from the MWR, it should look strikingly different than what it did last year, which is a good thing. So hopefully, we can continue to do the work that we're doing in-house and offset that and again, pass some more savings on to the rate payer. So credit to, credit to those folks down there because they're really, they're running that thing pretty good.
And I'm sorry, just the final point that I had, I know that a lot of us have probably gotten these questions, I personally have gotten these questions oftentimes from condo buildings and the, the issue of the tiered structure. And I've fielded a number of different inquiries and spent a lot of time with DPW, our town administrator, and also understanding better from the Advisory Board of Public Works. I think it's important for anyone who's watching, who's concerned, when they live in a condo building, about the tier that, and the rate they end up paying. The challenge we have is most of our condo buildings are not individually metered. And so that means that there's one meter that's going into an entire building that could have 40 units, 50 units, 20 units for that matter. And as a result, the meter is, is capturing all the water that passes through as if it's a single consumer. So as from the rate payer perspective, they're looking at it and saying, why are we being charged the highest tier rate, which then results in, in a higher rate? And the, the simple answer is that we don't have individual meters. And it's impossible for the town to be able to determine what a particular unit's consumption is when we have a one meter passing through a, a whole complex. The way to do, to, to resolve that or address it ultimately is a capital expenditure on behalf of a condo building, where say if it's a 20-unit building, they retrofit and install 20 different individual meters, one linked to each of the, of the units. The challenge with that is obviously there's a significant capital outlay by that condo building, those owners. And then each of the meters has a fee that's associated with it. And so right now, a, a condo building with one meter has one meter fee that, that is assessed. If every unit had a meter, every unit would have a meter fee. And to the, to the credit of Ms. Wade, who does a phenomenal job, she had run an analysis of just one building to see kind of how it compared. And ultimately, you know, dollars to donuts, we're looking at if you had that assessed meter fee charged for each individual unit, the ultimate cost to the, to the unit owner would, would be about break even, if not slightly higher than what they're currently paying, although they're paying at a higher tiered system. And so it's, it's a rather, you know, complex situation, and I know that our town has looked at ways, at least one building in particular, they brought in even someone to look at it to help the, the building to see, is there a way that we can somehow segregate these out so we have, you know, 40 different meters? And there is, but the cost would probably, this would never be realized by savings, or if, if it was, it would be many, many decades before that were to be the case. So I think it's part of a broader discussion we need to have about new construction going forward and what expectations we have for developers relative to metering of new units, because certainly people are, are right to be concerned when they're being, you know, charged at, at the highest tier rate, but it's, it's a function of how they're, they're structured. And that infrastructure within these complexes makes it impossible for us to do anything but have them, you know, take the lead on, on a massive, massive infrastructure project. And I'll defer to, to Joe and Ann for any further comment on that. But, but I know it's an important issue that a lot of folks have, a lot, a lot of rate payers have raised, so I wanted to be sure that we at least got that out there into the public to better understand.
I was just going to say, if they do it, the construction, it's so much easier. So you'll go into a condo unit, you see all the electrical meters up, and then you see one water meter. So if they do it then, it's so much easier than to try to retrofit.
Other, other questions or comments from the council? Vice Chair McLean.
I had a question for Matt. Matt, last year for fiscal '23, we had, with 3.5 percent rate increases for water and sewer, and I believe it wound up being lower, I think we voted 2.15 for sewer, we had projections of about overall 2.8 million in retained earnings. But this year we have 3.2 in retained earnings, and that is even with the blip at Crystal Lake. So my question is, you know, are, are these prognostications that we're getting, are they entirely accurate? Because it seems like we're better off than we should be.
So the blip at Crystal Lake, as you're referring to the treatment plant being down, which I think you are, that wouldn't impact the, the current fiscal year, that would impact the next fiscal year. So that would be FY '24 that's coming up, because that's the MWR assessment for the next fiscal year is what's affected by that. But in terms of where things ended up, I don't have the reasons in front of me, but there are multiple factors that could, could play into that. One could be if with our projections, we always assume that the water and sewer funds, those budgets are going to be spent in full on the expense side, and if that ends up not happening, then that's money that ultimately feeds into retainer, and might boost or increase those balances. I actually have not looked at that, I don't know if that's the answer, but that is something that could play into it.
Does your fiscal year 2015 analysis, does that take into account that for water, that we're likely to have a decrease in our MWR assessment?
So what we do there is, we actually recreate the MWR's assessment calculation and how they come up with it. So what, what ends up happening is there's a certain amount of cost that they need to recover, and every member has a share of those costs, and it's based on their flow in a given year. So what we've done is we've projected forward where we think the total, the system-wide assessment will be, based on what they, what they think their expenses are going to go up. Their budget document has an appendix at the back, it talks about how to anticipate that their expenses are going to increase 3.9 percent every year, because on the water side. Doesn't happen 3.9 every year, but that is the max that it goes up. Sometimes it goes up 3.5, sometimes it goes up 3.6. But we always assume with our projections that we try and be as conservative as possible, so we do the 3.9. And from there, we take what we think Wakefield's share, flow of share would be, and that is done using averaging. So we've looked at the last several years, and I think we threw out a, a share that produced the most recent assessment, because that's mentioned out of the one-year blip. So whatever the average was over the last several years, we apply that average to the system-wide assessment, how we come up with it. And then you compare the FY '25 calculator to that, to what the actual assessment is, yep, we have it going down.
You had, at the advisory committee meeting, I think you had a 10-year history. Is it accurate to say that we are probably right now at the, at the height of our retained earnings over that 10-year period?
I'll take that, Matt. I would say right now, we probably, at least in my experience here, we're right around what the pinnacle of that has been. I know.
Right, there was one year where water was only 190,000.
Yeah, so there's a break in, in some of the data that I have. I was lucky when I came into this role, I inherited a lot of longitudinal data. In this regard, there's, there's a break in it, but I know at one point in time, you know, it was much lower. You basically covered enough to cover your operating expenses, and we were deferring a lot of capital stuff. But I think, you know, right now, it's probably the healthiest that it's been in quite a while.
And when we have two-thirds of the sewer costs coming from the MWR, and the MWR increases flat or even down a wee bit like it is this year, does that mean that other expenses, the other one-third expenses are increasing a lot more than 2.5, which is why we need the 2.5?
So it depends, it's, it's a lot of pieces to that. So the MWR is a big driver of it. Depending on what they do could really impact everything else. Whenever we set our budget, there are some things, so the enterprises are self-sustaining for all of our employees and the benefits and things like that. So when the council's negotiating the GIC insurance rates and different things like that, similar to how that hits the tax levy, will also hit the enterprises. There are the things, contractual agreements and things like that between the labor unions and whatnot that come into play. I could say that we try to be as minimalistic as possible with that. So I know in water, materials and supplies and purchase of services, we didn't raise anything. This year in sewer, I think it's in materials and supplies was level funded. The only thing we took additionally, we took on a little bit of debt for the 75 percent grant loan that we had through the MWR. It's really as bare bones as it can be. I mean, if, if we didn't have to raise it, we don't want to. So anywhere that we're not either forced or, you know, it's absolutely a necessity for good business, then yes, we'll do that.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, last year we talked about an $800,000 commitment for a certain project. It didn't happen this year. That's not part of our current returning, retained earnings, right? We have already committed that money for the, was it the Eaton Street project?
Correct, so that's, that's under contract. They're out, you know, they're out here this week. So all of that, from an expense standpoint, once that's awarded, that's encumbered, should that come in under, to use a round number, if, if the project bid was $100 and the cost gave it 99, then that would be returned over.
Right, and that's not part of this 3.2 million in retained earnings because we reserved it last year.
Correct, not until the project closed out.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the council? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to a public hearing. Are there any members of the public in studio who wish to comment or ask questions? All right, seeing none. Sheri, do we have anyone online looking to comment?
Matthew, can you stop screen sharing? Thank you. No, Chair Chines, nobody.
Great, thank you. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to entertaining some motions around water and sewer rates. Vice Chair McLean, would you like to kick us off?
Sure. Also, if Steve or one at a time.
You could do them all at once if you so desire. We'll record them separately, but.
Okay, good. I move that the water service charge, no change is made to the water service charge from fiscal year 2023, recommending that to maintain the service charge at the FY '23 level. I further move that the water rate be increased by 3.5 percent, ending up with a tier one cost of 8.09, tier two of 8.56, tier three of 9.05, and tier four of 9.97. I further move that there's no change for fiscal '23 to the sewer service charge, recommendation being to maintain the service charge at the fiscal year '23 level. I further move that the sewer rate be increased by 3.25 percent.
I think you want 2.2.
I'm sorry, I'm, sorry about that, folks. Okay, we have, we have a new low. And by the way, congratulations on that. That's, that's the fourth rate, and everyone was lower than the previous one. I further move that the sewer rate be increased by 2.5 percent, resulting in a tier one of 11.98, tier two of 12.52, tier three of 13.06, and tier four of 14. two of 12.52, tier three of 13.06, and tier four of 14.13. I further move that the sewer flat rate be $361.96. I further move that the manual reed meter fee remain unchanged and stay at $50 per quarter, God bless you. And I further move that the septic disposal formula be involve one contractual change for an increase in the minimum hours from three to four to the formula, resulting in a facilitating facility operating fee of $110, disposal cost per 100 cubic feet charged at the current year sewer rate, and off-hours disposal rate, an additional minimum four hours at the current W4 scale times 1.5.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Can I just ask one clarifying question? The sewer flat rate, there were two different rates in the, in the materials in our packet. Can we just confirm that that is 361.96 and not the higher number that was in?
That is. That's using the latest and greatest two and a half percent.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any discussion from the council? All right. Hearing none. The motion before us, I will not repeat it word for word, but is to maintain the water service charge at fiscal '23 rates, increase water rates by three and a half percent, maintain the sewer service charge at fiscal '2023 rates, increase the sewer rate at 2.5%, set the sewer flat rate at $361.96, maintain the manual reed meter fee at $50 per quarter, and the septic disposal formula as presented with the contractual change from three hours to four hours. I'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. That's six, zero for all seven portions of that. Thank you, Vice Chair. Just before we close out the public hearing, Mr. Conway, do you want to speak, just give us sort of two sentences on the evaluation that you guys are starting around the second water meter question?
You took the words right out of my mouth. So as the advisory board last voted, when they last reviewed the moratorium on irrigation and outdoor watering meters for 2024, that's up to be reviewed again. That's something that we hear, Ann and I hear daily, questions, new residents and whatnot. One of the things that we're going to do is we're going to advance the timeline on that a little bit and start this summer after the holiday. And what we're going to do, we typically always come in with a financial kind of forecast, you know, of a couple of scenarios, you know, X amount of people were to take part in this, and we were to make a change, you know, how would the pendulum swing, or how would the scales balance off between the enterprises? One of the things we always end up doing is saying, and then there's an operational component of this or that. You know, if we were to manage it this way, here's some of the things associated with it, whether it's cost and time and whatnot. And if we go left at that fork, here's some of the other things. So what the advisory board has decided to do is we're going to go through the exercise and drill that down. And sometime, probably right after Christmas, the first of the year, the goal is to come into the council and present a complete picture. So what a draft policy of running that would be, any financial components related to a change in that regard, and then present that to the council for a little bit more of a detailed and informed decision than we have in the past. So as things come out and we get some feedback from the board, I might be communicating to you through Sheri or Steve for some different things. Certainly, as always, if any constituents bring anything to you, please refer them to Ann and I. We're more than happy to get as much information we can as we do that. And other than that, I'd say look out for the postings for the public meetings, and we'll be starting the conversation relatively shortly.
Great. Thank you. Well, we'll look forward to that. Counselor Butt?
Can I, I thank you both for coming and that presentation. I'm just checking out your website, and I know, you know, it's not a great use of your time to get those calls all the time. And so there is a frequently asked questions page, and I would think about just putting up something there. I feel like when we had this discussion, I think two years ago, we did a really great presentation with the advisory board about why we had the moratorium. It might even be worth it for our communications director to cut that video and put it up there, because I thought you did a good job explaining it. Just that way, we also, when we get inquiries, can send somebody where you don't have to repeatedly answer that question.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing for water and sewer rates.
I second that.
All right. The motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote to close the public hearing. Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So the hearing is officially closed. Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Abraham.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll see you back in the winter for, for water meters.
Absolutely.
We have a couple of minutes before our next agenda item, which is the joint meeting with the Gas and Light Commission. So if there's no objection, I'd like to take a couple of items out of order. Let's take item 11, donations. Is there a motion to accept or expend a gift or gifts to the council in aging in the amount of $320 from various donors with thanks?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Any discussion? No. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote to accept the donation. Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Aye.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Let's move to item 12, warrants. Counselor Vincent?
Sure, there's three warrants. Thank you, Counselor, I mean, Chair. Warrant number 46 was $7.253 million. The main thing there is Public Works, the Light Department, and group insurance. Warrant number 48 was $5.423,928. School departments, Light Department, the two major ones. The other one of note is the town council was $1.4 million. Of that, $1.4 million, 329,000 was for the public safety building, and approximately $965,000 was for money towards the new high school project. The last warrant was warrant number 50. The total there was $5.229 million. The main thing there is schools and, and the Public Works Department and group insurance. Thank you.
Great. Any questions from the council? No. Seeing none. Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Item 13, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the June 5, 2023 Town Council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any questions? Any objections to approving the minutes as, as drafted? All right. Seeing none. Minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 12, 2023?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion or objections? All right. Those minutes are also approved by unanimous consent. All right. It looks like we've got some chairs shifting around, so we'll give everyone a moment or two to get settled. I have 7:59, so take a moment to get settled.
Steve, we just, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
We just talked about a warrant for the public safety building. Do we have an update of when that will be completed?
It is completed.
The work's all done?
Work's all done.
Oh, great.
Yep. I mean, there might be a few punchless items, but it's fully, fully occupied.
And the, and the main entrance is back to be opened?
Main entrance is back. All great. Yeah.
That's great.
Yep. Yep.
All right. Well, my clock has just turned eight o'clock, so hereby call the joint meeting of the Town Council and the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Board of Commissioners to order. Thank you for joining us. Commissioners, would you like to just introduce yourselves for anyone in the room who may not know you in person?
Sure. Yeah. Chairman Jack Warshaw, Secretary Elton Piftie.
I'm Jennifer Calley.
And Tom Betcher.
Thank you. Well, again, thank you for joining us. Excited to appoint a new colleague for, for you four. So I understand the commission has a recommendation among the applicants who received.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. We did meet last week on Wednesday, and we discussed the candidates, and we discussed the different qualifications. And I have to say, we were all very, very impressed with the level of the qualifications of the candidates. And so it wasn't an easy discussion, but we discussed it at length. We discussed all the qualifications and the qualifications that we have on the board, and we were really trying to figure out which person out of all nine would be able to best enhance the skillset that we had on the board. And, and so in the end, we ended up taking a vote on the choice that we came up with, and we voted on Sharon Daly.
Great. All right. With that, I'll open the floor to nominations for the position. I, I assume the commission, Mr. Chair, if you'd like to make a nomination to that effect?
Yep, yep. I nominate Sharon Daly.
Are there any other nominations? Just as a reminder to the public, so this is a joint meeting of both boards, so each individual on the Gas and Light Commission, as well as the Town Council, does have a vote here. All right. Seeing no, no other nominations, we'll, we'll close nominations unless there's any objection. All right. Nominations are closed. I don't think, Mr. Mayo, we need to take a roll call vote, or if...
I think you do, because you do have somebody on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. We'll take a roll call vote to appoint Sharon Daly to the vacant position on the Gas and Light Commission. Commissioner Betcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Calhoun?
Aye.
Commissioner Piftie?
Aye.
Chair Warshaw?
Aye.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Sorry, it was just a point of discussion.
Oh, please.
Yeah. Could I just understand from the, the commissioners, you know, what, what it was about this candidate, what the skillset was that they, that most interested them and they thought was the best fit, just for those watching, they understand?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. And others may have other comments, but Sharon has a unique set of experience, where she worked with the state regulator over the utility industry, the Department of Public Utilities. And she, in addition, has left and now gone to National Grid, and, and she's moved up. She's the lead program manager for Clean Energy Investment. And she's got other experience around energy technology and policy and regulatory experience and innovative rate design that will help us on the board begin to adapt more of the new technologies that the industry is facing and help us move closer to a, a more renewable portfolio.
Great. Thank you for that. That was helpful.
Counselor, sorry, you're voting aye on, on Ms. Daly?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that's by a vote of, what are we, 10-0, we will appoint Sharon Daly to the open position. Thank you very much for, for your work, and congratulations, Ms. Daly. And I do want to just echo, Mr. Warshaw, your comment. I, I thought that the caliber of the applicants we got for this position were really outstanding. I mean, I was blown away by some of the resumes we received. And, you know, I certainly, you know, could have picked any number of individuals that applied and have been incredibly pleased with the choice. So good news, and I, I certainly hope that, you know, we, we see some of these names again as we, we look to fill other positions in town.
I agree.
So with that, I'll, I'll take a motion to close the joint meeting of the Gas and Light Commission and the Town Council.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any objection? All right. Hearing none. The joint meeting is closed. Thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate, appreciate your time here tonight for what was a relatively short discussion.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number six, public engagement. Let's just give folks a minute to filter in and out.
Yeah, I will.
Great. All right. It looks like we have four individuals for public engagement. We'll start with Karen McMaster. And just as a reminder to everyone, we ask that you take no more than three minutes. And the council certainly may choose to engage, but may not, but we'll, we'll take your comments under advisement for agenda items today or in the future.
All right.
So please go ahead, and please, if you wouldn't mind, just stating your name and address.
Karen McMaster, 25 Nahon Street. Here to speak about the 40B 32 Nahon Street development. I spoke about this all at the last meeting. And talking to the community, we have many, many concerns with 32, the size of it. We don't think it's responsible. It's too big. It doesn't fit the footprint of the neighborhood at all. The land that's behind there, the conservation land, if it's conservation land or the wetlands, the street, we were just out there talking, they're going to tear down what's existing there. We can't even imagine how they're going to remove that debris on that street. How do they do that? How do the workers, when they start developing something, where are they going to pack? How are the materials going to be delivered? We see on a regular day what it's like. I can't imagine what it would be like when this project starts. So those are really big concerns we have. Anything, when something's built, stuff can happen. Drainage concerns we have, a huge problem, you know, thinking about that. If this project goes through at this large, where, how far does it go? Does the next project that goes further down, that's going to be a reference for them to be able to keep building more and more down in our town until we reach our 10%? And even say we reach our 10%, who, what protects us from the state changing that? And then we're in the same realm again, and we're building and building more and more. Just quickly, I mean, you've heard my cause before. So many of us came from the city to live in a town like Wakefield, because we have our town government, and we have our zoning laws. And for people to just be able to come in and use this 40B and overturn everything, it just doesn't seem fair as taxpayers and property payers. So we want a resolution, you know, that hopefully the developer will think about doing something smaller like townhouses, and we're all on board with that. We know he's got to make money, and he's got to build, but just build something responsible that's not going to totally change the whole neighborhood and keep it to why we all moved there in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McMaster. Next on the list, I have Michael Turner. Great. Come up in again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Hi. My name's Michael Turner. I'm of 16 Wilson Road. And I wanted to echo some of the concerns that Karen had, but also extend them as well. So I'm actually pretty new to Wakefield. I moved out two or three years ago, and it was for a place to start my home, place to start my family. We have a one-year-old girl now. And we're definitely very concerned about the developments at 32 Nahon Street as well. Adding traffic make it difficult to get on and off that road, along with the concerns that Karen had. Further, and we're hoping that following the presentation tonight, we can begin a more active dialogue of getting a more insight in what's happening in these projects, just because at this time, I don't know about everyone else here, but we feel very isolated from what could be happening and out of the loop. We're definitely putting our trust in this group here to keep us informed so we can know what's happening and hopefully give our input as well. But thank you guys so much for the opportunity to speak, and I'll yield the rest of my time.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here, especially with a one-year-old. We know this is an easy time to be out of the house, or, or maybe a great time to be out of the house.
Well, that's good. It's good socializing with everyone.
Great. Thank you. Next on the list, I have Caleb McKay Smith.
Yes, she's online. Chair chime. She's, should be coming on in a minute.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes.
Hi.
Sorry about that. I think I clicked the wrong thing. Hello, my name is Kyla McKay Smith, and I live at 40 Nahon Street. As unabutter to the proposed development at 32 Nahon Street, I wish to state my opposition to the project. The proposed building is completely inappropriate in terms of massing, height, and setback, both front and side. Although some houses on Nahon Street are three stories, three-quarters of the houses on Nahon from Maine to Franklin are only two stories. The proposed four-story building is approximately double the height of the existing buildings on the lots in question and would dwarf its neighbors. Although I am a supporter of affordable housing, a proposal which would demolish three modest housing units, one of which was recently sold and would have been reasonably affordable, to cram in more units on a 165-foot stretch of Nahon Street as there are in the entire rest of the block, only 27 units, is not a good way to do it. Besides the concerns about traffic that other neighbors have mentioned, the street acts up with cars all the way to Franklin Street multiple times a day. of the existing street frontage." The proposed plans do not in any way seem to be even attempting to conform to those guidelines. Again, a four-story building 106 feet wide topped by a mansard roof does not fit in with primarily two-story buildings with gabled roofs mostly 20 to 30 feet wide. At the site visit, someone mentioned that the new proposal reduced the project, but that reduction was just from five stories, which had been called four, to four stories, and it increased the width of the building from 60 feet to 106, and the proposed number of units was increased from 24 to 32. In addition, there are multiple discrepancies and misstatements in the proposed plan and application to mass housing. The site plan and layout plan label it as, quote, "proposed three-story 32-unit multifamily dwelling," but there are four floors shown on the elevations and four separate floors shown with unit layouts. The application also calls the zoning a multifamily district, but Wakefield zoning information shows that the area is actually a general residence district, allowing single-family residences and two-family residences, not a multiple residence district. And the mass housing application also states, "There is a train station .2 mile from the state, from the site, and a bus stop .1 mile from the site, which promotes transit-oriented living. There is a train line that passes .2 miles from 32 Nahon Street, but I don't think they let you get on at the Broadway Street crossing. The closest commuter rail station is Wakefield Station, as you know, .6 miles away from 32 Nahon Street, over half a mile. And the closest bus stops on the 137 line from Reading to Up Grove are accurately measured in distance, but that bus runs very infrequently, supposedly every 20 minutes at rush hour, sometimes late, skipping trips. Definitely doesn't seem to be a way that Wakefield residents commute. And the surrounding land use slash amenities table in the application states that all of the amenities are accessible by public transportation, which is, again, misleading. The Galvin is walkable, .2 miles away, or one stop on the bus, not that I can figure out why you would take it. Greenwood Elementary is accessible by the bus, a mile and a half down Main, but children in this area attend the Woodville with a direct route east on Nahon Street perpendicular to the bus line and not on it." So I have many concerns, and I hope I didn't run out of time.
No. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name at first as well.
That's okay. Many people...
No problem. Next up, I have Mike Celeste. Thank you, Mr. Celeste. If you wouldn't mind taking a seat.
Hello. I'm Mike Celeste from 26 Nahon Street. And I was told that the mass government that is constructing this building is not concerned with traffic. So I would like to start another issue about the traffic on Nahon Street. And perhaps I could talk about the intersection of Main North and Nahon Street. I believe it was a couple, maybe 15 years ago, the town redid that area. And so that there are three lanes coming off of North Street, one to take a right, one to take a left, and one to go straight onto Nahon Street. Sometimes the traffic backs up onto Broadway because there's so much, and usually they're going into the middle lane to go down Nahon Street. On Main Street, coming from the middle school, there are three lanes. And there's one to take a right or go straight. There's a middle lane to go straight, and there's a left to go on Nahon Street. On Main Street going towards the middle school, there's only two lanes, and it gets backed up past the dog park a lot of the times, and thank you for the dog park, but it gets packed up. And that, the three streets before Nahon Street, take additional traffic to bypass that because Nahon Street is a connector between 128 and Route 1 and other places, too. And it's a very busy street. Which leads me to Nahon Street. Nahon Street, which, if you park on my side of the street, which is near where the new construction is going to be, you block one of the lanes of traffic and impedes traffic. An Amazon truck or UPS truck is totally snarls up traffic. The trash and recycling people, no one knows the time they come anymore because they don't even know the time to go down there for the traffic. So Nahon Street has one street coming out of it, and while all the other streets have at least two entryways. So traffic is a terrible issue. And when you think about it, when you think about the bulk school and the high school coming out, all that, about a third to a quarter to a third of the traffic coming out of those two schools is coming down Nahon Street. You can go down Main Farm Street either way, but the majority, a lot of the traffic is coming down Nahon Street already and already causing a snarl. So there's no parking across the street from us, because if it was, imagine parking both sides of Nahon Street. It'd be incredible. I sometimes park on the curb, and the police have let me slide most of the times, and they've only come into my house twice to tell me to move my car. So obviously, this is related to the construction on Nahon Street. We don't need any more traffic coming down there. And I'm hoping that there's something you can do about the traffic. Obviously, a one-way street, an underpass, an overpass, a tunnel is not going to help the town, but it would help me. But...
All right.
And, yeah, all of us. We all know what it's like, and it's pretty brutal. Sometimes when I drive to the dog park and coming back around, since I'm on that side of the street, I take a left down one of the side streets. Sometimes cars are barreling down Franklin Street. This is a little tiny little street. And so then I go around and I try to get on Nahon Street going towards my house, and the traffic is down past the corner where, you know, the guardrails are where some kids died years ago going so fast down the street.
Yes.
So when I go into the traffic, I have to wait for someone to let me in, and then I have to wait two sets of lights to get to my driveway. So...
Great. Well, just ask if you wouldn't mind finishing up so we can...
I'm finished. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Sherry, is there anyone else for public comment online?
No. We are all set, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anyone else in studio for public comment? All right. I think seeing none. We'll move on to item six. Item six is the proposed 40B development. Sherry, do we have the team for 32 Nahon Street online?
Yes, we do. Yeah, they're coming over now.
While we're waiting for them to come over, Mr. Mayo, any sort of opening comments that you'd want to make from the town's perspective in terms of timeline or process?
I think that it's important for the public to know that this is the initial part of this step, okay? The way that it works with mass housing is that the developer presents an application to mass housing. The developer then will have a site visit, which I think a lot of you are at, you're at kind of a hot day when we're there, as I recall. And then there's a presentation here to the Town Council. The Town Council will, excuse me, make some comments based on their feelings, their looking at the site, comments they've heard from the public, and comments they receive from the developer. That will then all go back to mass housing. And then there is some kind of give and take. And I think that what we have so far is up online. It's on our packages. I think Sherry will say yes for this project. Then mass housing will come back, and maybe the developer will come back with us if there's a change or what have you for additional comments. And then if it's actually acceptable to mass housing, there will be an application to the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals is where the real hearing occurs, really regarding the nitty-gritty of the actual development. We're here today to get comments from the neighborhood. We received a lot of them that I was able to write down quickly the other day. We've looked at it. We've actually spoken with the developer about our initial concerns. I'm sure we'll get more from the council today, and we have your concerns as well. Thank you for those of you that sent them in in writing, too. I also have the petition from the neighborhood, so I thank you all for coming in. And from that, we can get a presentation, I guess.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayo. If the project team wouldn't mind introducing themselves, and then we'll ask you to go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you, Town Council members. My name's Andrew Jones, Associate at Phoenix Architects. I'm here with my boss, Peter Sandors. We are representing Scott Green, owner and developer at 32 Nahon Street. Unfortunately, at this moment, our attorney, Paul Haverty, cannot make it, and also our site surveyor, Chris Bradges, cannot make it. With that being said, we are more than happy, as the architect, to both present the site plan and architectural plan. But if you guys feel that we should also maybe reschedule it to a time where they're both available, we can do that as well.
Now, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, if I might jump in?
Yeah.
I think Mr. Green is on and hasn't clicked over to come over as a panelist, so...
That is correct.
All right. So Scott, if you're hearing me, could you please kick that to come over so you can be part of the presentation today?
Sorry. I was just saying...
I didn't want to jump in, but I know he was there.
No, no. No, thank you for making sure we've got everyone. But I think once Mr. Green comes over...
Sorry, Steve. Sorry, Chair. He won't come over.
Okay.
All right.
If we could proceed with the presentation. I know you have some team members absent, but I think for the sake of the folks here and for our interest, I think we'd like to see what you have tonight.
Absolutely. Will do. So can I, can you disable the share screen, please? Thank you. So I think it's best to start with the site plan. I'll do my best here. I'm no site engineer, but I do know the site pretty well at this point, so... Okay. So this is supposed to, this first image here is showing Wakefield zoomed out and the location of the two sites that our client is trying to combine into one for this project. It's right here on Nahon Street. It's dashed in here. As you can see, it's zone general residence. As far as most of the required and allowed setbacks, you can see here in the corner, and we'll kind of go over that as I proceed. Once again, this is just a zoomed-out map showing on Nahon Street where it is. Down here are the two sites that will be combined. And here is an original site plan of the two sites. Both are residential homes, both are two-story. I will move to the next plan, which is showing what we are proposing. In this case, someone was correct that it's really a four-story, 32-unit building, not a three-story. We believe our site engineer is and has updated that. I just do not have that plan to show it. But for all the members, it is an actual four-story building. We are proposing 48 parking spaces, which meets the one and a half count of 32 units. As you can see here, this is showing the first footprint of the building itself. Where you're seeing these dotted lines coming around over these parking areas is actually the building cantilevering and turning into a podium-style building, which I can show once we get to the architectural plans. Also, one thing, actually, I'm going to back up on. There is, as far as the buffer zone goes, as you can see here with this line, this is 100 feet, 100-foot buffer zone from conservation land. So there's only a very small sliver that is on the site that would impact conservation or anything like that. And because of that, we have maintained the site to not go into that area. So as you can see, it's still green area in this corner. These are just some drainage plans that are over my head. And that was the site package. I think the more important thing is going over the architectural and explaining that, unless you guys have any questions regarding site.
Actually, if you could proceed with the architectural, and then we'll take questions on everything in total.
So here is a front rendering of what we propose the building to be. As you can see, it is four stories. We are using a traditional mansard roof with the idea of really making the fourth floor feel lower than it actually is. Many projects, you see, the roofline begins on the fourth story, and then you'd see gables and whatever, maybe hip roofs start from there. And so the strategy was to really pull down the building massing and not make it feel so tall from the street. We're using very traditional materials, brick, hardy board, siding, as you can see, using some standing seam metal roof. We're giving it a very traditional look in the brick areas with a rounded arch top to the windows. And as you can see, even where the parking is, we're really trying to hide the parking and make it feel like it is part of the building itself. As you can see, there's 32 units total, 26 being one bedrooms, two being two bedrooms, four being three bedrooms. This is the first floor, so if you're standing on Nahon Street, you'd be looking at the front of the building from here. As you can see, we're giving it a very traditional porch entryway. So you come in, be a little mailing room, and you come into a hallway. To the left, where we showed the parking and the covered parking area, there's an entrance way with the stairwell going up, and also in the back over the last. So as far as flow throughout the building, there's a lot of egress points. It all makes sense. You can access the building from most sides besides the right-hand side. And as you can see, for the first floor, because it takes a smaller footprint where the parking is, it's only six units, four one-bedroom units, one two-bedroom, one three-bedroom. So here's a three-bedroom, two-bedroom, and then one, two, three, four one-bedrooms. As you go to the second floor, this is where the footprint expands over the parking. So instead, you get 10 units instead of six units, nine one-bedroom and one three-bedroom. Once again, three-bedroom over here, and then the rest of the units all around become one-bedroom. As far as, you know, size and layout, you know, some of these bedrooms, I mean, some of these units are different than others, but what we tried to do in most of them is allow for an open concept area, so the living feels larger, making it feel usable and livable, all provided with, you know, really relatively well-sized bedrooms and really making the place habitable. As you go to the third floor, it basically repeats from the second floor. So not much of a change here. And then as you get to the fourth floor, we actually went back to the size of the first floor. What this allows us to do is create some outdoor terraces, rooftop areas, that could either be for mechanical, which we had talked about maybe the left-hand side being mechanical, which would be hidden under, you know, 48-inch parapet wall, so it wouldn't be seen from the street. And then as there's some, as you guys know, great land in the back conservation that will never be developed, we thought this area would be a really good spot for the community to have as a place for outdoor gatherings and such. So once again, this goes back to six units. So six on the first, 10 on the second, 10 on the third, six on the fourth, altogether 32. And then these are just some elevations. I'm going to go over here because I know it's going to be a big question. How tall is the building? It is 45 feet, 3 inches is how we're showing it right now. First floor being nine feet tall, actually, every single floor being nine feet. So I think there is some room there as well to potentially shrink down the building as we move forward with the project. And then these are just some other side elevation. So, you know, we really care about the look of the building. We're not just trying to put up a box. You can see the pipe on brackets being used. We're really trying to create a traditional residential look, the Boston bays with the metal roofs over it. This is where the parking would be, so arch tops, and just really trying to give it a traditional New England feel with the mansard. And then going around, right-hand elevation, and then the rear elevation. So keeping it coherent, making every single... It is 45 feet, 3 inches is how we're showing it right now. First floor being nine feet tall, actually every single floor being nine feet. So I think there is some room there as well to potentially shrink down the building as we move forward with the project. And then these are just some other side elevation. So, you know, we really care about the look of the building. We're not just trying to put up a box. You can see the pipe on brackets being used. We're really trying to create a traditional residential look, the Boston bays with the metal roofs over it. This is where the parking would be, so arch tops, and just really trying to give it a traditional New England feel with the Manzard. And then going around, right-hand elevation, and then the rear elevation. So keeping it coherent, making every single side feel very similar to the front. And that's my presentation, so. There's any questions, you'd be more happy to answer.
All right, thank you all. Open up to questions from the council. Council McLean.
Andrew, you indicated that Mr. Sprages may have changed the three-story, the four-stories, three stories to four stories in the site approval application. Has that actually been amended, or are you just saying that he's aware of it?
He's aware of it. I'm not too sure if it has been amended, but I know it's on his forefront to do.
On slide three of six, you were showing the distance from the wetland, and I'm curious, how do you know how far that wetland is, how far the buffer zone is? Have you had somebody descend the cliff and walk it? Have you had a wetland biologist in there? How do you know?
A good question that I cannot answer. So we will definitely write it down and come back with proper answers for that.
Well, I think they're 5,280 feet in a mile. And when I look at your page eight of 21 on the application, and I hope you'll amend it if it's incorrect, but when I look at the top, conservation land, the distance is .01 from conservation land. .01 of 5280 is 52.8 feet, which would put you significantly within the buffer zone, in my opinion. Also, on slide 10 of 20, page 10 of 21, you're showing the total parking spaces at 40 with a 1.25% ratio. If that number is actually 48, I think that number should also be changed, and these amendments should be submitted to Mass Housing. And also, when you go to the site plan, page six of six, can you scroll down to that? Not that I can see it anyway.
Yep. If there's one you want me to zoom in, just let me know.
Yeah, zoom in, please, lower left-hand corner. Are you accessing this building by North Ave?
No, we are not.
Well, I don't find it funny when mistakes like this are occurring on these documents. I bring that to Mr. Sprages' attention. This is what happens when you cut and paste. I hope you're paying better attention to the rest of the project. That's all I have.
Thank you, Council McLean. Council Dabrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Phoenix, for this presentation. I think that you clearly are talented in designing buildings. I think the challenge that we have here is pretty obvious that this building does not fit on the site that is being proposed. We're talking about over 45 feet in an area where most of these are single-family residences or of one or two stories. We all walked the site. I've been to a number of these site visits now in my time as a counselor, and I've never seen this sort of community engagement that we had at that site visit. It was incredible. And I know that all of you were not at the last town council meeting, but the studio was full of residents who expressed reasonable concerns relative to this project. It is simply too large for this site. And I understand that developer interests may not align with those of residents, but it's imperative that developers listen to residents. And these residents on the Haunt and surrounding streets could not be any clearer in their concerns. And they live in this area. They understand what it's like, and they understand the challenges that Nahant Street already faces without trying to stuff this massive project onto these two parcels of land. I think it was, and even your sixth slide, it was the slide showing what the footprint looks like. There is almost no green space at all. Currently, there is a good amount of green space abutting, you know, the wetlands area. Your plan has a little sliver of green space in the corner, and as my colleague pointed out, it doesn't appear to have been calculated accurately, and a small, small section in the very front of the building, basically. And that's the extent of it. And I also understand the residents' concerns about this, setting a precedent. And we saw that on North Avenue. 600 North Ave was a three-story building. Then its companion building was built at 598 North Ave. That was a four-story building. Then, you know, you create this height creep, and it is completely out of character with Nahant Street and the surrounding residences. You know, if we're talking about Boundary Street or somewhere else where there had been taller buildings to begin with, perhaps we'd be having a different discussion here now. But the notion that this height and this density is appropriate for this location, I know that most GPS, even if you're going to the high school, say, from Town Hall, GPS will bring you down Main and then over to Nahant. We know that we have a new vocational school that's going to be constructed, and that will have a higher student count. We know that the high school will be even more utilized because there will be things like an auditorium there now, and things that we haven't had previously. And so the demands on Nahant Street, the traffic demands alone, are going to be significant, and we can't look at this project in a vacuum. There's another project that's being proposed down the street on Nahant. There's Mike's Gym site that is also being proposed. So there's a lot that's going on here. And I recognize that the developers is participating, although not on screen this evening. But I think the developers should really be listening, the owner of this property should really listen to the concerns of the neighbors. And these neighbors could not be clearer in their justified frustration with this project. And having a presentation like tonight with some inaccurate information, in addition to the fact that we have no green space, you know, meaningful green space, the fire, if you're looking on the, I guess, the eastern side of the building, your fire apparatus will not be able to comfortably get through there. I've spoken to the fire chief about that piece. And it's just too big. It's simply too big. And the owner has a real opportunity here. It's within his control, more than the town council, more than anyone else, to do the right thing for the people that live in this area. And I would really implore him to do just that, to listen to what they have to say, to follow through on their legitimate concerns, and to make modifications. I know there had been discussion about the townhouses that are right at that intersection between Main and Nahant. That being a proposal, that would mean less density, it would mean less vehicular traffic, it would allow for more green space. There's a lot of opportunities here to develop the site in a more thoughtful way than what's being proposed here now. And again, it's a perfectly fine-looking building, but this building doesn't belong on the site that's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dabrowski. Other questions or comments from the council? Council Vincent.
Thank you, Chair Hines. Thank you for your presentation tonight. Currently, there are 85 residential structures that front Nahant Street. And I assume you would agree with me that an additional 32 residential units substantially increases the number of residents on Nahant Street. Given the current concerns with traffic congestion and pedestrian and vehicle safety, doesn't this proposed project add to these concerns and potentially adversely affect the quality of life of the current Nahant residents?
I can see that, yes.
Another question I have, just a couple more. Additionally, how would these additional 32 units impact the existing water distribution system on Nahant Street? Because I believe that Nahant Street's had numerous water main breaks in the past. So have you evaluated how these additional units might impact the existing water distribution system on that street?
I know Chris has done some deep research and development of an infiltration system that's shown right here that I believe will be able to withstand what we are proposing on site.
Okay, thank you. And then, do you have access to the permit site approval application form that you filed with Massachusetts Housing? Do either one of you have access to that right now?
I do not have it right now.
Because on page five of that document, it says the stormwater runoff managed on-site in a system that's underneath the parking lot.
Yes.
Can that runoff handle 32 units? Because right now, it's just handling a couple of residential sites that are on there. Have you evaluated that yet?
I believe so. I believe Chris has, yes.
Is that in some of the documentation that's been presented to us, or is that something that is supplemental?
I cannot speak for that matter.
I just didn't see it. And then on page 10 of that same document, it indicates that 37% of the acreage will be property, 52% would be parking and paved areas, and 11% would be unused. What is the purpose of the unused 11%? And is that the property that's, is that the acreage that's in the back of the property?
I believe that's all the green space that we are showing, basically anything that's not building or parking.
So it's accurate that more than half of that acreage is going to be parking and paved area?
I believe so, yep.
Okay, thank you for answering my questions. That's all I have.
No problem.
Thank you, Council Vincent. I understand we have Mr. Green on as well. Mr. Green, would you mind introducing yourself? And if you'd like to make any comments, please do so.
Yes, hi, my name is Scott Green, the developer of the property. We have done studies and deep holes in regard, and testing of the soils. The soils are excellent there. And the water table, as a matter of fact, when we did the test holes, we hit no water. We went down approximately, I believe, 10 feet. I know Chris was out there testing the soils, and we had it witnessed by the town engineer too. So the building should be able to sustain the drainage there easily.
Other questions from the council? All right, well, seeing none, I just, you know, I just want to reiterate, I think, some of the comments you heard from the council, and I think some of the comments you heard from the public as well. You know, to summarize, I think we have some concerns about the submission itself with some of the inaccuracies that, you know, as my colleague, Mr. McLean, suggested, I do hope those are corrected-
They will be.
-with Mass Housing. I think you've heard a concern that the proposal, while certainly the design aesthetic is nice, it is too big for the site, both in terms of height, in terms of density, in terms of ground coverage. I think you've heard a concern from the council around the lack of green space as something else that is troubling, given that there is a fair amount of green space today. And I think you've heard concerns around sort of the traffic congestion and some of the infrastructure components of that. I know we've shared, Mr. Mayo, a preliminary feedback letter with Mass Housing. I'd imagine we will be sending some additional feedback as the result of this presentation. But again, would, you know, would appreciate, you know, Mr. Green, you and your design team sort of taking these comments and feedback to heart as you work with Mass Housing on next steps.
100%. We've already started looking at the massing and new ideas on some things too.
Okay. Do you have a census to the timing of when some of those new ideas might be presented to either Mass Housing or to the community?
That's something I'm going to work with the architect, and I would say probably a month or two we'll work on new designs. We're coming up with some different concepts, lower the massing. And I listen to the neighbors, believe me. And possibly shifting the building over to give a little bit more space in between the lot lines and playing around with a couple ideas.
Okay. Well, we certainly look forward to seeing that. Any final questions or comments from my colleagues?
Can I talk in?
Please, Mr. Mayo.
Thank you. Chairman Hines. One thing that we like to see in developments like this, because it's very hard for me to visualize, and maybe that's just me, when you say the building is 45 feet tall, I'm not so sure I know what that means. But we do request a massing plan so you can show, and where you stay with that, and I was very happy to hear Andrew say that, Andrew offered to shrink the building. But we would like to see, as part of our request would be a massing plan, to show what does a 45-foot building mean in conjunction with the neighborhood? And that's what we ask in other projects too. And I would take to heart, and thank you, you met with me, your team, the other day. I would love you to take to heart to what the neighborhood is saying, is that they are not anti-development or anti-housing, but they want something that fits in, and they would, would, it sounds to me that they said it tonight, they would support something along the lines of the townhouses that are at the end of the street. And I know that you said that you would consider that, and I hope that you would take that to heart. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Hines.
Thank you very much. I just want to also echo the massing plan is something that I know I personally find helpful. And, you know, one of the things that I comment whenever we get proposals like this is when we see the architectural drawings of the building. It's always shown kind of in isolation with trees and vegetation around it. And we know that that's not actually what's around the site. There are buildings, and there are houses and so forth. And so I think as we get those massing plans, if they can also include an accurate representation of what's immediately around the building so we can understand, you know, distances from the proposal to other homes in the area. Council Dabrowski, I see that you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just add that something I've heard more with this project than probably any other project that I've seen come through our council is the residents actually offering solutions. And they were, they continued to point to Mr. Mayo's earlier comment, to the townhouses that are right at that intersection, and how that was a successful, you know, development on a small parcel. The reason we're looking at an asphalt jungle here is because of the parking requirements, because of the incredible density of the building as it presents now. And so think, reimagining this project as one where it's focused on something that townhouse style achieves the goal of providing more housing, but also, I think, better respects the very valid concerns of the residents, and as a tremendous amount of green space, which also eliminates some of the wetland concerns, and then just the general, the permeable surface of these combined parcels. So, Mr. Green, I really would encourage you to take to heart what they have suggested to you. I am confident that there is an economically advantageous means by which you could develop this parcel in a more thoughtful way rather than what you're proposing here now. And I suspect that the butters and the neighborhood, and I imagine the town council would be quite supportive of such developments and be willing to work with you in any way that we can to achieve that goal. But this is not it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dabrowski. Any other comments from the council? All right, well, thank you very much for appearing tonight. We appreciate it. Appreciate the presentation-
Thank you very much.
...and again, hope to see some new information soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, thank you to the members of the public who participated as well. You're obviously welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, too. Though I imagine the asset naming policy next on the agenda might not be as much of a draw.
It's not as exciting, is it?
All right, we'll give everyone just a moment to clear out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, well, speaking of next on the agenda, the aforementioned asset naming policy, Mr. Mayo or Mr. Mullen, is this you?
I'll jump in. It won't be nearly as exciting or as interesting as the other topics in front of us this evening, but-
Steve, this is the high point of my week.
I know. In any event, I think some time ago, I shared this concept with the town council, and I did want to bring it up after talking to the chair. You know, as are we becoming more policy-driven as a council, which I think is an excellent thing, I do need, we have to think about considering things that are going to happen. And with the advent of a new high school in particular, and we've had other requests as well tangentially on buildings and areas in town, there will be a request to name something after someone or a portion of a building after someone. And as the custodian of most of the assets in town, with the exception of the library and the light department, and although controlling, bad word, but the custodians of the schools and in conjunction with the school committee, there will be requests to name items after people. And I think that we need to be, step forward with some sort of a, some sort of a game plan of how to do that. So in front of you, I have a first draft of a public asking naming policy that the town council has reviewed for, I guess, legal content. And I have some priorities in there, some guidelines, some things that the council might consider. Not even thinking about asking for any sort of vote tonight, and maybe not even at the next meeting. It's something that I'd like to flush out over the next few meetings to see where the council is, how they feel on it, whether you like just one item or two items, or you don't like any of it, it's all fine. But I just wanted to throw that out there. And really, it's trying to set up a, some sort of a guideline where priority will be given to names carrying geographical, historical, or cultural significance of the town, or named after an individual or an organization that has made- named after an individual or an organization that has made significant financial or civic contributions to the town. I think it's important that we think about that as we go forward with requests that we might get. And that's really all it is. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions, or councils want to talk to me offline about this, but it's not, was not anything ever meant, meant to be voted on tonight. Why, I didn't have vote anticipated next week as well.
Any questions from the council? Again, this is something that, you know, we put on the agenda to start the discussion, but this is certainly not the end of that discussion. Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Counselor Butt.
Steve, thanks for, thanks for sending this along, and yes, sometime just to mull it over and think, think about it. I will say, I love what the Friends of the Lake do with the brick naming. And I think as we think about, you know, I understand that this is about, you know, buildings or streets or things like that, but also things of, maybe something like that that we can do for the town, too. You know, I know years ago with the new high school, the saving, the seats and the saving things there, right? Are we going to do that again? Is that something in the new high schools, there are, obviously, you talked about opportunity, but I would think about kind of those, those also bigger projects of not just one entity, but kind of group things that can happen. Just want to throw that out there, too.
I will maybe add on that and say, one opportunity to name something in town would be to contribute to our tree program.
Yes.
And, you know, I think we've all talked about sort of trees as an important part of what we're, what we're doing here, and certainly a great way to remember someone or create a legacy for someone in town as well, I think, along those lines, just to put in a plug for community. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Mayo?
So I hope that as the summer goes on, people want to circle back and come down. Bring me a latte, it always goes over very well. Remember, he no one has since you. What, what can I tell you? We can chat about it.
No, I would ask, oh, Councilor Dombrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just add that there are different ways to be able to dedicate or honor someone, and it doesn't mean that there needs necessarily be a plaque on everything. And when you mentioned the trees, for example, the community program, there are ways that we can leverage technologies so that we could have, you know, maps that identify trees that are, you know, in honor or recognition of someone. Because, you know, I think we have to be very mindful of how we're identifying things. And sometimes, I think, too much signage ends up taking away from the effect of what the intended gift is. So certainly, if it's, if we're naming an auditorium or something, that's different. But there are a lot of things like that that I think we should also be thinking about, ways in which we could still make sure that someone is properly honored without necessarily having some sort of like gold little plaque on, affixed to everything. So just a part of the, part of our thinking through in the coming months is something I'd encourage.
Thank you.
Councilor Smith-Galvin had come up with that idea. You had mentioned that the like, like a QR code, right? Of like, things that were named after people or dedicated to people.
Yeah, I love, I love the tree idea. I guess, just in briefly looking through this, I'm a little, I don't want to get to the point where we only name things if people are financially supporting something, too. I really feel like that does not really reflect or give people equal opportunities to be a part of this. So I know it's always a constant struggle with fundraising, but I'm very sensitive to that.
Councilor McLean?
I agree with you, but I'm also sensitive to, you know, anytime, for example, civic involvement, there's so many people that do so many things, volunteer for the town, that anytime we get into picking someone, we're probably excluding another 49 people who are equally qualified. I'm a big, I'm a big fan of generic naming. I'm a big fan of Wakefield Memorial High School, and leaving it at that. But that's just my own personal perspective.
Any other comments? I would just maybe add, first of all, I appreciate Mr. Mayo kind of taking the first pass at this, because I think it is an important discussion for us to have. And I think my colleagues raised some really good points and really good questions that I think, you know, we need to talk about, and I hope everyone will sort of filter feedback to you over the next, you know, several weeks on this. One thing that I do appreciate is that I do think that it's important to clarify that, you know, the naming of town-owned assets, again, other than those, those things that are carved out, like the library and the gas and light department, does rest with the town council. I think it's important to make sure that that authority is clear, so that, you know, what's almost worse is kind of this, this overemphasis on naming everything, or, you know, honoring some people but not others who made equal contributions. I think what makes that worse is if the providence of the name and the process that was followed to get there is unclear. And so I do very much appreciate the fact that there, this is an attempt to clarify that, this is an attempt to codify that in a way that, you know, I think will help us assure that, you know, whatever form we adopt a policy, if we choose to do so, you know, that we've got a fair and consistent and kind of logical process to follow in the future.
I think the other thing that I included in here, again, for discussion, was that there is a public hearing, and that there will not be any naming before a public hearing as part of this draft. I think it's important here, the public.
Great.
As well.
All right. Seeing no other comments, again, we'll ask members of the council to follow up with Steve over the next few weeks with comments and feedback, and we'll plan on bringing this back, bringing this back to the council, probably for more discussion before we're ready to settle on anything for a vote as well. All right. Next up is item number nine, reserve fund transfers. Mr. Mayo.
And this is the kind of things that excite me, you know, Tom. So as the council knows, every year we do fund the reserve fund, and that is under the control of the finance committee. And every year, we fund them, last few years, with $400,000. And this is to cover any expenses that were overrun in any departments that, you know, that were unanticipated or anticipated, and we allowed them to go to this extent, I should say, instead of having a separate town meeting vote. So pretty typically, it's around $200,000 a year as we run through it. And remember, the town council, unlike other department, like the school committee, we can't move things from one line item to another. So if I have a big surplus in health insurance, let's say, I can't decide to move everything over here to cover these items. And that's just the way Mass General Law is. And it's also, I think, gives a better idea of what happens in each department, because when we show you the budgets in the next fiscal year, part of that spreadsheet will actually show you any reserve fund transfers that came. So you have an idea of, you know, real good idea of where that budget has gone. And sometimes there are anomalies, and you don't have to worry about it. So in any event, this year, it's a little over $226,000 out of the 400K. So it's about a normal year. And I'll just run through them, and this is for town council awareness, you don't need to vote on it, although you can ask questions. This is the FinComs bailiwick. So in the treasurer's office, we did have a retirement, and we actually had some training in there during the same time, that while, so the new person could be trained. That's a very important, very busy office now, particularly with all of the bonding coming through, you know. And it's actually one of those offices that we really need to be, make sure we have a good succession plan. And we do now at all levels, so that's really good there. Elected official, obviously, is something different. Legal expenses, we seem to always get an increase in the legal library updates, and we do need that for part of our, our town, our town. And it is that, when Tom gets questioned by the FinCom on that, he says, well, they're not mine, they belong to the town, and God forbid he ever, he ever leaves, the updates come to the town. In the town clerk department, there was a retirement at the beginning of the last fiscal year. A longtime employee left and had vacation and sick time to be paid. We do not budget for retirements traditionally, and so this is the traditional kind of way of doing it. I will tell you that, and you'll see this over, over the coming years, there are, there is not a lot of sick time accumulated by anybody anymore with the new generation coming in, so that numbers will be going down. But people do get their vacations that they haven't used anyway. Conservation commission, I actually had to have them work a few more hours, still kept them under a benefitful numbers, because I didn't want to have to pay benefits to anybody in there. But there's been a lot of more work in conservation by the agents there, with projects in front of them, as you can imagine, going before them. Board of appeals expenses, this is for the cost of additional hearings. We budget for so many hearings per year, yet we seem to have more because, hey, more people are developing, so we're getting more hearings. So although we have an additional cost of hearings, on the, on the revenue side, we have an additional number of fees paid. So that department actually ends up being a moneymaker, in a sense. However, it's not a revolving fund. So we budget for a certain number of hearings per week or per month, or per every two weeks. And if we get more, there's more, there's more cost of those, but there's more income coming in that covers that. So that kind of happens every year. Insurance premium, which was a small increase, you know, was a wrap-up vehicle endorsement. I think, remember, we set the insurance prior to we know everything at the end of the year. Professional medical, we do, we give a medical exam to every new employee that we have coming in. We also give psychological exams to police and fire, and those costs have gone up a little bit. I think we had a number of new employees that was covered there as well. Fire department salaries, there was $24,000 for a retirement, so there was another 20K over, that's covered there. Fire alarm salaries, interestingly enough, this one was kind of, was unexpected, but there was a heavy workload in the past year, and several projects came up, including the utility pole changeovers for the North Ave Bike Lane project. And you notice those utility poles have been moved back, so we had to have more, more hours spent there, which is, you know, which is great, but there are more salaries to go with that. Vocational school expenses, we, we do not know our number of students we're going to have in vocational schools until October, which is well after we set the budget in April and May. So we have three extra students at Essex North, and one student at Minuteman in Lexington. So it's around $21,000 each for those four students, including transportation. I go back and forth on this, whether to have an article at town meeting, or whether to use it through the reserve fund. It just seemed to make sense this year, where we had plenty of space in the reserve fund. Put it, put it there, but that's a third of our reserve fund money this year. And you'll note on our budgets for next year, because now we know those students are there, and they're presumably going to continue, that that budget was increased in our fiscal year '24. The final one is Medicare expenses. And Medicare, as you, as the council knows, is that completely based on salary, okay? So if salaries go up that aren't in the budget, or if then the Medicare that we pay on either of these paycheck, 1.45% that goes into the Medicare fund will increase. So in the last fiscal year, the salaries went up mainly because certain, the school department did put more into salaries than some other areas in their budget. They can move stuff around, so Medicare increased. And as the council knows, this could be a little bit less, because we are looking to charge back 8,000 of the school lunch Medicare costs that hadn't been charged to that revolving fund before. So that all adds up to 226,735. I'll be at the finance committee Thursday night for a fun-filled evening to talk about those, and I'm happy to entertain any questions. But pretty typical year, to tell you the truth.
And Mr. Mayo, the FinCom is voting on Thursday night for those transfers.
On Thursday, yeah.
Questions, Counselor Butt?
Just, Steve, I know, over the years, I know you've probably told us this, but do municipal employees have a cap on sick days and vacation days?
Yes, they do.
Because that's a lot.
Well, well, no, because there was, which one?
Both. I mean, 17 and 24.
That was, that was over 24 years, but it is 150 days, and it's a third of that, the sick days. Let's call it 50 days.
You can carry over 50 sick days.
Yes. You can carry over more than that, but you only get cashed out at a third. That was embedded in contracts long ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other questions? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. I would just thank Mr. Mullen for maintaining the law library, because under the town bylaws, the town council is actually responsible for maintaining the law library, so thank you for doing that for us.
I'm very old-school about my books.
Other questions?
Can I make one more comment, too? Can we just continue to moderate, monitor the conservation commission salaries, the additional hours? I have a feeling hours are going to continue to increase. I know they're, they're two-part-time positions right now. I just, you know, I understand trying to keep them under benefits, but if they're actually, the hours of work are there, it's something we should reconsider as we go into.
I think we did add it a little bit this fiscal year, so we'll be monitoring.
Okay, yeah. Just ask that we continue to do that, because it's really not fair to just kind of, if the work is there, and I think it's continued in being there, to not make it a full-time position.
Seeing no other comments, thank you, Mr. Mayo. Moving on to item 10, appointment. So this item is related to a working group that we had discussed at a couple of prior town council meetings, to focus on funding for Wakefield Community Access Television. So as we've discussed before, you know, the budget for WCAT is set based on fees for cable subscriptions, and as more and more of us are cutting the cord, those fees have been decreasing, and so the budget pressure on WCAT has been decreasing as well. We talked about during last year's, or I should say, the budget discussions for the fiscal year that starts next week, we talked about, you know, exploring some different ways of addressing that funding gap. And so the intent is to put together a working group that consists of folks from the town, from WCAT, to try to come up with some options that we'd be ready to discuss within the town council prior to the next budget cycle. So I'd ask for the town council's consent to appointing the following individuals to that working group. Counselor McLean, representing the town council. Bill Redding, representing the Cable Access Television Committee. Brian McCubrey, Paul Norman, and David Watts, Jr., representing WCAT. Amy Forsyth, representing the FinCom. Mr. Mayo and Kevin Gill, representing Town Administration. And a public schools appointee to be named soon. I know Superintendent Lyons is trying to confirm that name. Again, these would be a working group to look at WCAT funding issues with the expectation that they would come back to us with some recommendations before the next budget cycle. Are there any objections or concerns or comments on those appointments?
Yes, Chairman, I just want to make sure everyone understands, when we use the term working group, it's still a public body.
Correct. They would be public meetings and posted and.
Yeah.
So I guess a committee and public speak. All right. Well, hearing none, we will consider them so appointed. Thank you to everyone for volunteering that, for that. Thank you, Counselor McLean, and we'll look forward to future discussions there. Moving on, item 14, announcements. Any announcements from the council, or Mr. Mullen or Mr. Mayo today? Oh, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. Just a couple of things from the police department. Tomorrow is the retirement of Sergeant Michael Ryan, who has honorably served our town since June 2012. And then Officer DJ Morales is going to be promoted to sergeant two days from now. And the other quick tidbit I had is Brad Simpson, the retired Wakefield Memorial High School basketball coach, is my neighbor, and I talked to him the other day when he was walking his two dogs, and I reminded him that he's probably one of the few people in the state who is a member of the Massachusetts Basketball Coaches Association Hall of Fame, coached a state title team in 1997, coached an NCAA basketball champion, Mark Plansky, who played for Villanova in 1985, and coached an NBA champion player in Bruce Brown. who played for Villanova in 1985, and coached an NBA champion player in Bruce Brown, Jr., who just won the NBA title with the Denver Nuggets. That's pretty good.
That's pretty cool. Great. Thank you, Counsel Vincent, Counsel McLean.
And one other tidbit, and Counsel Vincent may be able to help me with this if I get it wrong. We did recently learn, I believe, that the fire department, fire chief had indicated he has some remaining free, help me out here, Bob. He's got the...
Oh, smoke alarms.
Smoke alarms, thank you. He's got some free smoke alarms, was it for seniors?
Well, he'll do it for anybody, any age, but he does have free smoke alarms. Some of them are two years in their tenure cycle, so they still have eight years of life left them.
Right.
But he's willing to not only give them to you, he gets the money from, I mean, he gets the donations, I think, from the Rotary.
Rotary.
But they come and install them for you as well. And since I'm on the other side of 60, I actually asked him if he could come and install some in my house, so...
I will point out, Chief Sullivan will come and actually install them himself in many cases.
Yeah. So just to let people know that that's out there, if they're in need of some free fire safety equipment.
Thank you, Counsel McLean. Counsel Dabrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to first thank the Wakefield Alliance Against Violence, who invited me to speak at their annual meeting and breakfast this past week. It was really enlightening to see all the tremendous work that they've done in their now 15, going into 16 years of service to our community. That is a dedicated group of volunteers who are making not just impactful, not just making an impact on the community, but at times really, you know, making lifesaving efforts on behalf of our neighbors and friends. So I thank them for that, and I wish them continued success going forward. Also wanted to remind everyone to get your lawn chair out immediately to Main Street. Just kidding, don't do it yet. The Independence Day Parade, the largest in the state, second largest in New England, is on Tuesday starting at 5:00 PM. And so I imagine most of my colleagues, if not all, will be joining me in walking the route and waving to our neighbors and constituents. But it's a great, great opportunity. They continue to need our support. You can go to julyparade.org if you'd like to make a contribution in any amount. I know that they would be incredibly appreciative of that. And otherwise, at a reasonable time, think about putting out those lawn chairs to reserve your spot. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Counsel Butt?
And just to add on to what Counsel Dabrowski said, we thank all the volunteers, and then also thank the volunteers at the West Side Social Club, who in addition to the parade, put on children's activities, including a bicycle stroller pet competition in the morning, and then the fireworks at night. So thank to all the volunteers who work endless hours to make our town shine bright, and then thanks to everyone on Steve's team in public safety, who make sure that the town stays safe on that day. And then just one other, one other announcement for those celebrating Eid is on Wednesday. Calendars say Thursday, but it's actually Wednesday, so anyone celebrating, I wish you a happy Eid.
Thank you, Counsel Butt. Counsel Smith-Galvin?
Just a reminder, something we talked about when we approved the farmer's market, but the bike valet is now up and running, thanks very much to the youth council. So every Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00, which are the times of the farmer's market, there will be a number of volunteers who can park your bike, and you get a valet ticket, you don't have to lock it up, and you can walk around, and it's been rainy the first two Saturdays, but I'm hoping, especially as we start construction there, parking is going to get more and more difficult, so please consider riding your bike, and you can valet it. Or strollers, or scooters, or anything non-motorized on wheels.
Thank you. Mr. Mayo, anything for me?
I just wanted to thank Counsel Vincent for bringing up the 1985 Villanova beating Georgetown for the national championship. I always enjoy hearing about that.
They beat Maryland along the way in the Sweet 16.
Just a couple of other announcements to add. First of all, Counsel Dabrowski mentioned the WAVE Annual Breakfast. I did want to congratulate Officer Amy Rando from the Wakefield Police Department, who was the recipient of the first-ever Spotlight Award from WAVE for all of her work. You know, she really is an incredible asset to our community and to our police department. You know, the joy in that room when she was announced as the recipient, probably from everyone except for Officer Rando, who was a little too humble to take in all that praise, but it was really wonderful to see her recognized, and certainly well-deserved. You know, she's one of, really, a very, very large number of committed, dedicated, and just incredible individuals working for our police department and our public safety personnel. And, you know, while she won the award, it certainly is one that, you know, would have been well-deserved from any number of folks from those departments. To that end, I also just want to add, you know, my appreciation to the Wakefield Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Department of Public Works for everything that goes into everything that happens on July 4th. I believe, Steve, not a single police officer gets a day off that day.
Correct.
And that probably goes true for some of our firefighters and our public works folks as well. It takes a lot of effort to put on these events, and I think for some of our town employees, some time away from their families as well, and time that I'm sure they'd enjoy spending as a day off as well. So thank you to them, and just a reminder to everyone to please stay safe and pay attention to what's going on. And then finally, just wanted to mention that we have a pop-up village open on Main Street. A few of us were able to attend the ribbon-cutting last week. It really is an exciting opportunity to, you know, create a temporary bricks-and-mortar space for some local businesses and community groups, including Inspire Cafe, which was selling slush, but I think they're expanding their menu soon, so please go check that out. Also, really great to see the job that was done on that site. This is an empty parcel across from the Americale, if folks aren't familiar with it, and it really looks wonderful, and so I'm really excited about that and appreciative for all the work that went into making that happen.
It was a great public-private nonprofit partnership, really.
Absolutely. Now, you know, when we created the community and economic development position, I think this was the type of thing that we envisioned, and so it was just really wonderful to see it come together.
All right. Moving on, item 15, any matters not anticipated for the agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 16, adjournment. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 10th at 7:00 PM, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Great. Any objections from the council? All right. Seeing none, this meeting is officially adjourned at 9:20 PM. Thank you very much for joining us. Thank you for everyone who have participated today in public engagement, and have a happy Fourth of July.